Okay, we're ready.
Ready to go?
Mm-hmm.
All right, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Des Moines City Council meeting for April 19th. We're going to get started right now. We've got a couple of proclamations. We've got the Dia del Niño, Dia del Libro, the Day of the Child, Day of the Book. And if she's on, I'd like to have Ashley Moleson step up and make a couple of comments. Ashley?
Ashley, whoops, sorry. Ashley, you're in the panelists, so you can unmute yourself. Okay.
All right, everyone's able to hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, well, thank you Mayor, County, and City Council for formally recognizing Dia del Niño, Dia, excuse me, Dia del Libro on April 30th. The library, with support from the DMPL Foundation and in partnership with Parks and Recreation, Police, Fire, and Public Works, along with several community partners, including Knock and Drop Iowa, whose mission it is to provide positive community action through programs beneficial to our Latinx communities, are hosting a Dia del Niño celebration on Friday, April 30th, from 4 o'clock to 6 o'clock at Birdland Park. 1,000 library learning bags, or Biblio Bolsas Educativas, full of activities and community information, will be distributed through all six library locations and at our Dia event held at Birdland Park. At the event, kids will receive a healthy snack bag from Knock and Drop, meet community helpers from several city departments, and see some of our city vehicles up close. Families are encouraged to enjoy our outdoor bilingual story walk, "I Can, Yo Puedo", at Birdland, which will be in the park through May 10th, or to join Ms. Les from Forest and her special guests for a virtual reading of the book at 10:15, found on the library's Facebook page. This past year has been incredibly challenging for our kiddos, and we're excited to celebrate the joy that children and reading bring to our communities. We'd love to encourage families and other organizations in Des Moines to find a special way to remind our kids how loved they are this Dia del Niño. Again, thanks for joining the library and our many partners to recognize what we hope will become an annual celebration of children and families in Des Moines. Thank you.
Ashley. Ashley.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah. Been a little, big bad.
I'm sorry, were you able to hear my comments?
Yes, we did. Good job.
Okay.
Thanks, Ashley.
Thank you.
In, for that introduction to the Dia del Niño, Dia del Libro, the Day of the Child and Day of the Book. It's a national celebration to recognize the joy found in early childhood and reading. And whereas since 1997, the American Library Association has promoted Dia del Niño, Dia del Libro on April 30th to celebrate and advocate for the early childhood literacy across languages and cultures. And whereas the Des Moines Public Library and the City of Des Moines recognize the need for inclusivity in the support it provides to the city's youth and their families, including a commitment to equitable services and representation. And whereas, Des Moines recognizes the importance of celebrating the diversity of its youth and their families by including their languages, cultures, and stories in its advocacy. And whereas, the Des Moines Public Library and city government are committed to the continued support of early childhood literacy for all Des Moines residents. Now therefore, on behalf of the City Council and the residents of Des Moines, I hereby proclaim Friday, April 30th, 2021, is Dia del Niño, Dia del Libro, Day of the Child, Day of the Book Day. And we urge all residents of the city of Des Moines to celebrate with the City of Des Moines Library, the Parks and Recreation, Police, Fire, Public Works, and several local organizations, along with kids and families, at Birdland Park, April 30th, 2021, with a showcase of city vehicles and outdoor bilingual story walk, a virtual bilingual storytime, and the distribution of 1,000 library learning bags, including bilingual books, reading recommendations, and hands-on activities that can be done at home. Thank you very much to everyone and look forward to celebrating this event. We'll move on to our second proclamation, which is Arbor Day. And to give us sort of a kickoff on that, I'm going to ask our municipal arborist, David Yon, to please kind of give us a, an outline of what's going on for Arbor Day. David?
Can you hear me good?
Yes, we can.
All right, well, Mayor, County, City Council, and residents of Des Moines. My name is David Yon. I've been city forester since 2011. As this is my final Arbor Day proclamation before my retirement on June 4, I want to say thank you to the following, who make our work such a success. To community development for including us in site plan review and for the most excellent plan review protocols that continue to ensure we are building our urban tree canopy during development. To engineering for partnering with city forestry in the development and enforcement of tree protection guidelines during construction projects. And also for working with us to properly space downtown trees appropriately while respecting all other infrastructure, such as signs, lights, and parking meters. And for working side by side to negotiate space for tree roots in the concrete infrastructure. To our friends in GIS who helped us map our ash trees to facilitate our EAB management plan and further guidance in helping us procure the online tree inventory. To our legal department who help us defend our tree resources from those who mistakenly or willfully damage or destroy this precious resource. To our wonderful city manager and all of his staff for showing confidence in us and for supporting our goals. This is a short list of those with whom we have the most contact, but we literally have worked with every city agency in pursuit of excellence in urban forestry. So any and all of our successes belong to all of us. Thanks especially to my own Public Works Department and Director Jonathan Gano for their visionary support and enthusiastic encouragement. Thanks also to the entire city forestry staff who helped to maintain our beautiful urban tree canopy. And finally, thanks to the greenest mayor on the planet Earth, Mayor Frank County, who promotes and plants trees and shows continually interest in our work. And to our most excellent City Council, thank you. Thank you for supporting our tree planting alliance with Trees Forever and the New Growing Futures Program. Thank you for your unqualified and enthusiastic support for our brand new Urban Forest Master Plan. Additionally, some of you have worked in the background to ensure that we have, we're leaning into a progressive tree planting budget. I feel very blessed to have worked this final decade of my career in a city that loves trees, for residents who care deeply about their trees, and with colleagues who supported forestry efforts without reservation. So thanks to everyone for making every day Arbor Day in Des Moines. And Mayor, County, with great confidence for the future of trees in our city, I invite you to proclaim Arbor Day in Des Moines. Thank you.
Thank you, David, and thank you for all of your work in this city since 2011. And thanks come from not only my office, but all of our City Council members and all of our city staff. We appreciate your collaboration with all of us.
Thank you.
Our City of Des Moines proclamation reads as follows. Whereas, Des Moines strives to maintain a healthy natural environment for its residents and guests. And whereas, urban trees help the City of Des Moines achieve the Guide DSM goals of sustainable community, livable community, and upgraded urban infrastructure. And whereas, trees help the City of Des Moines achieve and maintain its star community status by providing climate adaptation, greenhouse gas mitigation, green infrastructure, outdoor air and water quality, and enhanced business retention in development. And whereas, the residents of Des Moines are embracing the opportunity to increase the urban canopy through the Growing Futures Planning Partnership. And whereas, the City of Des Moines has been recognized as a Tree City USA for 29 years by the National Arbor Day Foundation and recently as a Tree City of the World. And whereas, the City of Des Moines fully supported and adopted its first ever Urban Forest Master Plan in December of 2020. And whereas, Des Moines desires to continue our reforestation and management programs towards ensuring the future of our urban forest trees. Now therefore, I on behalf of our City Council and the residents of Des Moines do hereby proclaim Friday, April 30th, 2021, as Arbor Day and urge the residents of Des Moines to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to plant, maintain, and collaborate with everyone and our urban trees and woodlands. David, again, thank you and look forward to all the continued support from our residents and businesses. Thank you all. That's our proclamations for today. And I think that, Kay, we should call this meeting to order, and I will ask you to call roll, please.
County?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Boss? Boss?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
Your Honor, we have a quorum.
All right, item two is approving the, the, the agenda as presented and/or as amended. And I will say that for F, Councilmember Gatto has a conflict of interest in item 32. Gatto, Gray, and Westergaard vote no. And with that, could we have a motion to approve the?
I'll move it there.
And as amended, it's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any dissent? Hearing none, the item passes. Move on to item three. Tonight, these, this is the approval of our consent agenda. And the consent agenda tonight is three through 32. Generally, these are routine items and will be enacted by one roll call vote without separate discussion unless someone, either a council member or someone in the public requests an item to be removed, to be considered separately. Are there any items? Kay?
I'll move it, Mayor, if there's no items that we need to pull off.
All right. Would you poll the council, please?
County?
Oh, I, first I would like to ask, would anyone from the public want to pull any items for consideration? Seeing none, poll the council.
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, that completes our consent agenda, and it takes us to our ordinances first consideration. Item 33 is amending Chapter 114 of the Municipal Code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows. A is a code modification to remove peak hour parking restrictions on the south side of University Avenue from 25th Street to 31st Street. It's Council Communication Number 21-187. Council, any questions or thoughts here?
No, but I'm happy to move item 33 and 33A. This is just coming out of our streetscape work that we've done in the area and happy to make these changes.
And Josh, if I can add, if you want to waive the second and third readings, I could support that as well.
I, yes, I'll, I'll also move to waive the second and third reading. Thanks, Bill.
You bet, Josh. Great area.
All right, would you poll the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, item 34 is amending the Municipal Code of the City of Des Moines by repealing Chapter 102, Article 6 relating to benches. Council Communication Number 21-186. A is the final consideration, the orange above. The waiver is requested by the Engineering Department and will require six votes. Council, any comments on this one?
If not, I'll move 34 and 34A.
All right, 34 and 34A have been moved. Would you poll the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, that brings us to the communications and reports. We have a number of folks who have requested to speak this evening. And for those persons wishing to speak this evening under public speaking item, we will only be calling on those who have registered to speak. Now, I want to say that there's a large number of speakers, and of course, everybody knows what the rules are. And so each speaker this evening is going to get, have 25 seconds to make their comments. So we would like them to be quick and thoughtful and germane and stay on topic. We appreciate your participation. Because of this number of speakers, I think that, while our rules have been out, I think we're going to review them between now and the next meeting and see if we should make some changes. And the council will, we will be discussing that. So keep your own time, because at the end of that 25 seconds, the clerk's going to announce time, and the speaker's mic will be closed, and we're going to move immediately to the next speaker. We want to hear from all the residents, and we encourage the residents to be respectful of others' viewpoints that are different from their own. And while you may certainly disagree with that viewpoint, I want to remind everyone that council's rules provide that any comment that is slanderous will result in that speaker being barred from further comment. As a presiding officer, I'll determine whether the comments are slanderous or not. And a fair warning, arguing with the presiding officer about these determinations on any manner is not permitted. And doing so is going to be ruled disruptive. And as a result, the speaker will be barred from further comment during the remaining portion of the meeting. Let's move, I will say that we have had four individuals withdraw their request. And that first one was A. And so we'll go straight to Speaker B, which is Scott Thompson. Scott? Scott on?
Yes, I have him.
Yeah, I'm, I'm right here. I'm, I apologize.
Okay, Scott, jump right ahead.
I was too busy trying to jump in. Thank you all very much for providing the opportunity for me to speak this, this afternoon. I have emailed each of you two resolutions. One, on the full implementation and enforcement of the unbiased policing ordinance that was passed in September. And also your consideration for establishing an independent civilian community review board for the police department. I'm representing the South Side Democratic.
Time.
All right, move straight to Jalen Cavell.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm part of the South Side Dems, and I want to uplift what Scott was saying. Also, if someone backs out of speaking, you should recalculate time. Also, Mike Fong needs to be terminated. Terminate all racist cops. Fire Scott Sanders. Fire Dana Winger. Legalize and decriminalize cannabis in the city. Act on the recommendations of the task force. Defund and abolish the Des Moines Police Department. They are violent and racist. We do not need them. They do not keep us safe. We keep us safe here in this community. We need to defund them. We need to abolish them. And please, 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 fire Scott Sanders.
Molly Arnt.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Molly Arnt. I use they/them and she/her pronouns. I live in Ward 1. I just want to echo the demands of CCI and the Black Liberation Movement and say that you need to, Scott Sanders needs to lose his job. Dana Winger needs to lose his job. We need to decriminalize and legalize marijuana in Des Moines. Um, yeah, basically, just stop being racist and running these city council meetings.
KT Menke.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
City Council, it's imperative that you remove Fong from training DMPD. Look into the crisis prevention intervention instead. Train with evidence-based techniques so that the DMPD can learn to de-escalate in a nonviolent way. Unlike Fong, with a lengthy costly history of violence spanning from 2007 to 2018, citizens in the community fear him. For the care, welfare, safety, and security of the residents, please remove Fong. He is racist, and he is biased, and he has issues with.
Time.
Abby Banks. I guess that's Bankus.
Sorry, it's Banks. Abby Banks, she/her. I am also calling in support of Des Moines Black Liberation Movements, Back the Black Demands, which cover terminating all racists in the DMPD. That does include Scott Sanders and Dana Winger. Legalizing and decriminalizing marijuana and acting on the recommendations of the Cannabis Task Force and defunding and abolishing all police. As I said, especially Dana Winger.
Aye.
Emmanuel Smith is withdrawn, his request to speak, and as has Eva Lewin. Our next speaker is Keenan Crow.
Hear me?
Yes.
Cool. The city manager recently stated to the press that he found the arguments surrounding Officers Fong and O'Neill unconvincing, but I don't understand what isn't convincing about it. The bank wouldn't place an employee caught embezzling on their fraud task force, and insurance company wouldn't place an employee disciplined for workplace sexual misconduct on their sexual harassment task, task force. Likewise, it seems absurd to suggest that somebody who lost the city $200,000 for beating a man and dropping them on their face while handcuffed should be on a de-escalation task force. Please remove these officers and recognize what you're asking folks to accept as reasonable.
Denver Foot. Is Denver on? All right, let's move on to Arthur McCarthy.
Arthur, if you're on a phone, please hit star nine. Raise your hand. Do you want to move on, Mayor?
Okay. Adam Kellnan.
Hello, my name is Adam Kellnan. I live downtown. Now you see him pronouns. Fire Scott Sanders. Fire Dana Winger. Fire Sue Ann Donovan. Fire Fong and fire O'Neill. It's very obvious you have not lifted a finger to help us during the hardest year of most of our lives. Instead, you've attacked us and created new rules specifically to punish us, primarily BIPOC folks and women. Y'all no longer have the ability to put the cat back in the bag. You haven't earned our respect, and we'll be here till each and every one of you are out of city government.
Truli Wingerd.
My name's Truli Wingerd. My pronouns are she/her, and I demand that the violent pigs, Fong and O'Neill, be removed from the de-escalation training, that all violent racist pigs be weeded out of DMPD. You legalize and decriminalize marijuana, and that Scott Sanders loses his job. Stop giving Scott Sanders and the police department free range to do whatever the fuck they want and do your jobs by listening to constituents who elected you to represent them. We did not elect Scott Sanders. He's overpaid. He's terrible at his job. I also mean that there be an external investigation into DMPD for murdering D. Caffey and abolish DMPD.
Time.
James Grimm.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, gold braid bruisers, blue line losers pulling black folks over in their police cruisers. You got white pard Winger steering the ship while perisic slings lies like buffalo chips. You got Fong and Wessels racking up lawsuits for beating on folks who won't lick their boots. You know, you got to lay down and confess. DMPD is a motherfucking mess. Adios. You're a punk, Gatto.
Peyton Shoemaker.
Hi, I just want to first say, go off, James. Secondly, I want to say that Emmanuel Smith withdrew their request to speak because you guys literally would not provide ADA accommodations, which is ridiculous. And you guys need to really rethink what you're doing in this city, because if you can't provide accommodations for someone who has a disability, then that's really fucked up, and you should all quit.
Carrie Gosnell.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Carrie Gosnell, all my pronouns are she/her/hers. DSM surgeon, I live in Ward 3. Surgeons Fong and O'Neill need to be removed from their de-escalation training positions. These officers have shown that they do not know how to de-escalate, and frankly, shouldn't be police officers in the city at all. We need trained experts to ensure that this critical matter is dealt with properly. The situation also highlights the need to have citizen review board, because it seems Scott Sanders and Chief.
Time.
Amy Lubert.
Hi, Amy Lubert, she/her pronouns, Ward 1. Michael Fong and Shono are not qualified to be de-escalation trainers. To bury your heads in the sand and play ignorant to the harm is an act of white supremacy and has deep consequences to Black and Brown members of our community. Being reactive and waiting for more violence and trauma from police to the community is despicable. Listen to the community. It is okay to say you were wrong and make better choices.
Teresa Harold is withdrawn. Let's go on to Lily Nellens.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Lily Nellens, she/her, I live downtown. People's lives are not mistakes to learn from. City Council has the power to prevent deadly mistakes before they happen. Fire all the racist abusive cops and city employees, including Dana Winger and Scott Sanders, and then abolish the Des Moines Police. These are the only logical and humane things to do. And if your biggest concern is still people swearing while they're fighting for their lives and to be heard, then go fuck yourself.
Vanessa.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Black Lives Matter. Terminate all racists. Legalize and decriminalize marijuana. Defund and abolish the police. Go fuck yourself. Tommy, we need Zoom meetings to continue. When we go back in person, there's no reason to end the Zoom meetings. We need to continue accessibility for everyone, not taking it away. And we need housing now. If you do not.
Time.
Brad Wiesenmeyer. Okay, Jacob Grobe.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
DMPD has proved once again that they're not open to any type of reform, that they don't work for the public good, and that the City Council is incapable of holding them accountable. Therefore, City Manager Scott Sanders and Chief Winger should be fired for insubordination. And we should begin to funding DMPD to refund community-based programs like jobs, healthcare, and education that have been starved for funding for far too long. Strong communities keep us safe. Keep us safe. We keep us safe. Abolish, please.
Free to debate with.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to uplift what everyone else has said, and add that the city council and the city employees who supposedly report to this council are really not here to serve you or to serve us, they're here to serve property owners and the police, right? Our city government would rather spend over $54,000 in 2020 during a pandemic to evict houseless people from their camps than work directly with houseless folks to make sure.
Time.
Brandusa Villika. Methae Little Smith. Is you muted? Not on? Okay. Peter Clay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Peter Clay, Ward 4, Des Moines, CCI, people are in pain, in the past three weeks, more than 60 people have died interacting with law enforcement, more than half were black and brown people in our country, our problems come from profound inequities in our country, our state, our city, I urge you to lean into the urgent work of implementing and strengthening the racial profiling ordinance that you passed last year, thank you.
All right, it's 5 o'clock, we'll move on to the hearings, and then come back to our speakers after. Our first hearing item is item 36, 36 is on request from Callison Oil Company, the owner to amend Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow future land use designation and rezoned property located at 1501 East Euclid, from I-1 Industrial District to MX-3 Mixed Use District to allow reuse of the existing vacant land for a restaurant use. A is the first consideration of this ordinance, and I'll first ask the city council and remind everybody on the hearing items this evening, for the zoning items only, which are the 36 through 39, we will hear from the parties in interest first, and then from the general public, and those parties in interest are the applicant and anyone living within 250 feet of the property be rezoned and has been sent a notice. After all those parties of interest have commented, we will open it up for members of the general public to speak, and to aid the city clerk, in calling on the parties in interest, I will ask everyone else, don't raise your hand on the Zoom call unless they are, you are the applicant, or you live within that 250 feet and received the mailed notice for the rezoning. Anyone who raises their hand before it will be compared to the mailing list, and if you're not on the list, will be considered disruptive and will not be recognized for the remainder of our meeting, so please wait until I call on the general public for the zoning items, or you will not be called on. General public comment, not to exceed one minute per person to a maximum of seven minutes on a, on an item for the general public. The remainder of the hearings this evening, any interested person, they make germane comments, and not to exceed one minute per person, up to a maximum of five minutes for that hearing item, and as a reminder, public improvement hearings, only comments as to the plans, the specifications, form of the documents, and the engineer's estimate, and low bidder designation will be considered germane to that item, and all their comments will be considered non-germane. For the rejection of bids, item 44, there, we're not going to allow any public comment to be accepted, as the bids are all being rejected in their entirety. So let's go ahead and back to item 36, on the request from Callison Oil Company, who's the owner to amend Plan DSM. Counsel, any comments on this one? 1501 East Euclid.
If there are no comments, Mr. Mayor, I would like to move items 36 and 36A, and I would also like to waive the second and third readings.
No, right. Councilmember Westergaard has moved A and asked to waive the second and third.
Yes, sir.
Any parties of interest who would like to speak on this? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open it and see if there's anyone from the general public who would like to make comment regarding this amendment to Plan DSM. All right, seeing none, the item's been moved, would you poll the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right, next item is item 37, it's on request from Visiting Nurses of Iowa, Doing Business As Every Step Owner to Amend Plan DSM, Creating Our Tomorrow Future Land Use Designation, and Rezone The Property Located At 956th Street, From P2 Public Civic and Institutional District to RX2 Mixed Use District to Allow The Expansion Of The Existing Hospice Use There. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. Counsel, any comment here?
Well, I'll be happy to move this, I think this is another example of a property that was rezoned during the, during our larger zoning ordinance changes, and that to be able to just do some simple things like add an awning, needs to be, needs to be rezoned, so hopefully this is a relatively straightforward piece, and I'm happy to move 37, 37A, and I'll wait to see if we hear from anyone in the public, but I'd be willing to waive the second and third reading as well.
Okay. Item 37A and has been, 37, 37A and add B, which would be to waive second and third, thank you, Councilmember Mandelbaum. Again, this is a rezoning, let's ask if there's any parties in interest, either the applicant or anyone living within 250 feet of this property, if they would like to speak. Seeing none, let's ask if there's any germane comments from the general public.
We have Vanessa.
Yep, Vanessa.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Regarding future land use, I got cut off earlier because I only had like 20 some seconds, but what I wanted to talk about was you guys talking a lot of shit about the houseless.
That comment was non-germane, are there any others?
I have India, Indira.
All right, Indira.
Hi, I would like to know when you guys are going to be revisiting Plan DSM.
Okay, I think that answer to that larger question, I would refer to the city manager, and Scott, do you want to make a quick comment on that?
Just real quick, typically after five years, we'd want to readdress it, if we can do that, so we can bring it back at that timeframe.
Okay. Jalen.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, so as it relates to Plan DSM, like you were talking about revisiting in five years, hopefully we have a different city manager by then, but also interested in kind of what Indira was, was looking at there, and yeah, also as it relates to item 37, I would just like to ask the presiding officer, Mayor Franklin County, can you just let people finish when they're speaking on an item before you call it non-germane? Because we don't know if Vanessa was gonna, you know, be speaking about this or not, it's just my request, thanks.
All right, seeing no more, let's poll the council, please.
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Item 38 is on a request from Hernandez Holdings LLC, is the owner to amend the Plan DSM, Creating Our Tomorrow Future Land Designation To Rezone Property Located At 1440 and 1444 Capital Avenue From NX3 Neighborhood Mixed District To Limited RX1 Mixed District, Mixed Use District To Allow The Existing Off-Street Parking To Be Used In Conjunction With A Business Or Professional Office Use At 1451 East Grand. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above, the waiver is requested by Don Hernandez, who's the officer, and it requires six votes. Counsel, any comments?
Mayor, no comments, I'll move 38, 38A and 38B.
All right.
After hearing comments from the public.
All right, 38A, 38 and A and B have been moved, and ask if there's any parties in interest, either the applicant or those living within 250 feet who have received notice. All right, seeing none, let's open it up to the general public, again, for germane comments, up to one minute per person. Vanessa? Caitlin Hanson.
Caitlin, are you on a telephone? I'm trying to unmute you and allow you to talk, and it's not letting me do so. Caitlin, you should be able to speak now.
Okay, thank you. Um, I work on Capitol and E16, and I would just like to ask a question about this item, and I'm wondering how this will affect the traffic around the Capitol View Elementary School, and also mention that in the mornings and during the school year, the traffic around that area is very heavy, as it is one of the biggest elementary schools in the city, and that there are also very few crosswalk signs or yield signs, or four-way stops for the safety of those students who are walking to school in the mornings, thank you.
All right, Steve, you want to quickly speak to a traffic issue?
I'm a mayor member of the city council, Steve Neighbors, city engineer, yep, so as part of the site plan review process, the, that's a traffic review will be conducted, first a determination whether or not a full impact study is needed based on the type of use, so, so that's, I don't have that information on, on what the review is, but that's the process that'll follow, doing the traffic review, where they'll actually look at traffic volumes surrounding the site, as well as the anticipated trip, number of trips generated by the site, and how they would impact the surrounding street network.
Mike, do you want to make quick comment?
Mike? You can go ahead and speak.
Mayor County, members of the council, Michael Ludwig, Deputy Director of Development Services for the City of Des Moines, these are two existing parcels that are used for parking purposes today, no changes are currently proposed, so there will be no site plan review, it'll be a continued use of the property, but it is being tied with the professional office use at 1451 East Grand Avenue, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. All right, don't see anyone else, let's. All right, Leah? Looks like Leah's our last.
Yeah, am I allowed to ask a question?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just wondering why Vanessa wasn't allowed to speak, because she was not being non-germane, she wasn't even allowed to talk.
All right, next speaker? Okay, that's it, let's call the question.
I'm moving, Your Honor.
All right, poll the council.
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Sorry, item 39, on request from 7600 Southwest 22nd Street, LLC, is the owner for review and approval of a PUD Final Development Plan For Airports Crossroad Condos For Property Located At 7600 Southwest 22nd Street. Counsel, any comment here?
Again, I'd be happy to move this item, I want to see if we hear from the applicant, as I know the applicant's been in touch with, with staff since we set the hearing, so want to provide an opportunity for the applicant to say anything.
Okay, we'll ask the applicant if they want to speak, we'd ask you to put your hand up at this time. All right, let's, okay. John? You're on.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
My name is John Hardy, he/him, and I did want to talk about.
I believe that's non-germane to this issue, let's go ahead.
39.
Looks like we have one other speaker, Bridget Peterson.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Um, I definitely wanted to uplift the last speaker's comments, and I also wanted to ask why Vanessa was not allowed to finish her comment before it received a ruling.
Yeah, we had a disruptive individual who was arguing with the presiding officer, thank you. Okay, we've got the airport crossroads condo, let's poll the council, please, motion's been made.
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries. Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Item forty is the twenty-twenty-one citywide PCC pavement restoration program. The resolution approving plans, specifications, form of contract documents, engineers estimate, receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsible bidder as TK Concrete. Tony J. Vermeer is the president, six hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. Council communication number twenty-one dash one seventy-six. A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. We would ask if there's any comments and we would say that, or remind everybody that the, any comments have to be objections with the proposed plans, the specifications, contract, or the estimated cost of the public improvement. And those are the only comments that are going to be considered germane. And we're going to have one minute per person to speak if you so desire. We'll ask for any comments at this time. All right. Jalen?
Hey, can you hear me? Yeah, so I mean, I guess I'm just kind of wondering about that, that price tag, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Seems kind of like a hefty price, but I do think that our roads really do need fixed. We have a problem with infrastructure in the city. I know some council members like Carl Boss ran on like, let's fix our road. So, you know, I do think that road improvement projects are very important. Again, wondering though about the six hundred and sixty thousand dollars, it's a lot. I know that there's, you know, money that needs to be spent helping people's lives in the city. You know, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars, it's a really similar price tag. I actually, what Frida mentioned earlier, the price that the city's paying to a big houseless folks. So there's a lot of things that we're spending money on. Are they really the best things for the city? I think it's some questions that everyone needs to be asking themselves.
Want to thank individuals for those comments. I will just say that the city council and our city engineer and staff has worked very hard to put together a pavement restoration program. We're going to spend over four hundred million dollars on improving our streets all around the city. So we are committed and we're moving forward with our, with our plans and implementing.
If there's no other speakers, I could all move forty and forty-eight.
Okay, we've got Peyton.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to uplift kind of what Jalen was saying about the price tag on this and the kind of concerns related to that. I also think it's interesting that when the public brings up concerns about the price, that your response to that is telling us how much more money you're planning to spend on this than on other things, like what Jalen and Frida were talking about with evicting the houseless community. You know, spending money on maybe helping them instead, but instead you're telling us that you're going to spend four million dollars on this. Also, if you did want more money for, to do any of those things, you could definitely take that out of the police department budget.
Chelsea?
Hello, this is Chelsea Chizam Vargas. My pronouns are she/her/they. I wanted to uplift the previous comments on point forty here. I definitely am, am feeling what they're saying about, you know, the priority of this budget, just because I think that's one big thing that always gets talked about. You can really look at a city's priorities by looking at where their budget is going. At the same time, I do recognize the need for solid infrastructure. I really appreciate when the streets are paved because they're a lot easier to march on, which is helpful when we march to your houses. Thank you.
Katie?
Hi, this is Katie. My pronouns are they/them. Yeah, I do also want to lift up everyone that was just speaking here. Thank you very much. I too am finding it really important to spend money on improving the streets. I'm not so sure about the four million dollars, but I'm concerned about the accessibility of the streets for all people. I'm also concerned about how evicting the houseless plays out on improving the streets. I know that the most recent evictions, there were talks about there needing to be, I don't know, some kind of building, and that's why you needed to be evicting them. But I encourage you to consider taking some of that money and placing it into improving the lives, like where houseless people could be living instead of putting it into the.
Our speaker input, time has been used up. We have a motion, I believe, by Connie. Would you pull the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, let's go on to item forty-one. Could I move to reconsider item thirty-nine? Staff was going to provide an, an update that, that I'd like to go from, and that might alter our recommendation a little.
All right, well, we had a seven to oh vote. We have a motion to reconsider item thirty-nine. Should, let's go ahead and I think we're going to have to poll the council.
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yep.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right.
I think if this is a good for Mike Ludwig.
Yeah, I agree with you, thank you very much. Mike?
Mayor, county, members of the council, Michael Ludwig, deputy director of development services for the city of Des Moines. I apologize, I was having technical difficulties and couldn't address you before the vote. The applicant had contacted staff and had a concern about the plan and zoning commission's recommendation on this item. The plan and zoning commission recommendation was that they had to use a twenty-two gauge metal, which is our current standard for tax abatement purposes. But the planning commission authorized use of exposed fasteners. They're, they're color-coded to match the metal on the building. The problem is, is that the exposed fasteners don't work with the twenty-two gauge metal. And so it was kind of a contradictory recommendation from that perspective after the applicant found out additional information on product specifications. So they submitted a letter requesting to be able to use either twenty-four or twenty-six gauge metal, which is a thinner metal than is allowed under our tax abatement standards. Staff made them aware that they would not be eligible for tax abatement, but that if they wanted to use lesser, you know, a thinner gauge metal and not get tax abatement, that we could support at least a minimum of twenty-four gauge metal on the building so that they could use the exposed fasteners. So it's entirely up to the council whether you want to allow twenty-four, twenty-six, but the staff recommendation was for a minimum of twenty-four. And just noting that under current standards, they would not be eligible for tax abatement. Thank you.
Josh, did that cover the question that you had, and do you have a motion as a result?
It did. So I'll, I'll move to amend this item to be consistent with the staff recommendation that Mike Ludwig just made, which was a minimum of twenty-four gauge feel for the plan specifications.
All right, let's pull the council.
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right, that takes us to item forty-one. Item forty-one is the twenty-twenty-one HMA residential paving program contract. One, resolution approving the plan, specifications, form of contract documents, engineers estimate, receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsible bidder as Grimes Asphalt and Paving Corporation. Timmy T. Malakot is the president, eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. Council communication number twenty-one dash one seventy-seven. A is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet.
Mayor, I'll move forty-one and forty-one A.
All right, forty and forty-one A have been moved pending. Let's see if there's any of general public who would like to file objections on the proposed plan, specifications, contract, or the estimated cost of the improvement. Indira?
Hi, I just want to continue the conversation. I know that these are high price tags, but I'm not concerned about that. I think it's very important for us to be focusing on paving our city sidewalks, on paving our city streets, things like that. Accessibility is a huge issue in Des Moines. The sidewalks are not accessible to differently-abled people. So I'm not concerned about the price tag. I think that it's a good thing that we use things like the general obligation bonds and TIF districts to fund certain projects that are going to be helpful to the community. I guess my concern is why don't we use general obligation bonds and TIF money to be funding things like housing instead of evicting houseless camps and spending our taxpayer money on that?
Okay, that doesn't have anything to do with this contract. Joshua Cook?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo some of the points that Indira made and, and also ask why we're contracting companies that don't exist in the Des Moines metro. It seems like kind of a waste. I saw that on item forty, TK Concrete is in Pella. It kind of seems like a waste of money. I'm sure, you know, there's some lowest bidder reasoning. But again, like we are investing in our city, so a little confused why we're using companies that aren't in our city.
Michelle Franklin, please.
It's actually Mitchell, but Black Lives Matter. Why are you saying all that shit about the houseless community? Fuck you, bitch.
Okay, that was disruptive, and let's move on to Peyton.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just wanted to uplift what Indira was saying about how we definitely need to be redoing our asphalt and pavement and all of that stuff in the city. And once again, I did want to say that if we wanted to like have more money for these things, we could definitely defund the police department and take the money out of that.
Okay, do you have anything else to say about this contract, this bid, this estimate? Okay, Denver?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Denver Foot. I am here. I hope I'll be able to do public comment later. But I wanted to talk about item forty-one. I wanted to uplift everyone else that spoke before me. And I specifically wanted to uplift the question. I know this is a habitual thing where we bring contractors in from outside of Des Moines to work in Des Moines. But I wanted, I just wanted to uplift that question. Why do we do that? And can you make it more clear for the community so we can understand that better?
Mayor, do you want to make the comment about that we're following state law?
Yeah, I'm going to let the city manager quickly catch on that.
Yeah, mayor and council, that's exactly right, Councilman Gatto, that we have to follow state law and the procurement rules that they set forth, which is to receive, to take the lowest responsible bidder in these instances regardless of where they may be located.
All right. I believe we have a motion on this. Is that correct?
Yes, your honor, I moved it.
Yep, good job. Pull the council, please.
County?
Yes.
Boson?
Connie?
Boson?
She might have had to step out for a minute.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Connie, are you back on? All right.
Your Honor, that's six yes, motion carries.
All right, let's move on to forty-two. The McCray Park Improvements Phase Three Resolution, approving the plan, specifications, form of contract documents, the engineers estimate, receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsible bidder as Mintern Inc. Clinton M. Rhodes is the president, two million, nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents. Council communication number twenty-one dash one eighty-one. A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Counsel, any comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may. You know, I'm really excited about this. Project and, and wanted to just provide a, a little bit of context. You know, McCray Park, it's really the gateway to the south side along the Southwest Ninth Corridor. And it's been a focus ever since I've been on the council, actually, before I was, was on the council. It's been a focus for, for that reason and others. You know, this park has the potential to support and help accelerate growth along the entire Southwest Ninth Corridor. The Friends of Southwest Ninth have been big supporters of investing in this park for that reason. It's also a connection to other amenities in our community. This park can connect to Grace Lake and will both complement Grace Lake as, as we enhance this park and it becomes another signature park in our system. But it also provides an outlet for additional park use as Grace Lake's been one of our busiest parks and most popular parks. And this is another area, if, if folks are nearby, another area for people to, to go to. But it also i- is going to help us serve the entire community. You know, one of the things that folks may not realize, the immediate service area of McCray Park, and that's defined as within a ten-minute walk, and that's one of our goals citywide is to, to have every resident living within a ten-minute walk of one of our parks. But, you know, this park serves thirty percent people of color and fifty percent low-income residents. So it's great to be investing in this, and this is going to really complement some of the other things that we've done. I, you know, since I've been on council, we've funded the EMC Overlook, the Breton Open Air Shelter, the renovation of the Works Progress Administration era enclosed shelter. We've dredged the pond, we've started reconstruction of the roadway and the creation of a protected trail that will both slow down traffic but also provide a walking loop. And this day, and this agenda item is the final phase of these improvements. So we're going to finish the reconstruction of the roadway and finish the trail. More importantly, we're adding a natural placecape and spray ground with an open air shelter next to it. We're also going to add a boardwalk across the pond that will have fishing spots, views of downtown, and lighting features, assuming that we can get the, the private fundraising to, to get that piece done. All of these efforts in McCray Park have been, because of our public-private partnership, you know, we've had great particip- you know, we've had great participation in the earlier phases. We've also already got great participation in this phase and a couple major donors. We've had a great volunteer committee to work with that has been really invested in getting these projects done. And then I also just want to acknowledge the role of our Parks Department and the great work they do. None of this could happen without all of the work of our Parks Department and all of our partners that they help facilitate. So with that, I'm excited to see this moving forward, and I'm happy to move this item.
All right, thanks, Josh. I'll ask the general public if you have any objection to the proposed plans or the specifications, the contract, or the estimated cost of the improvement. Okay, Adam?
Yeah, first clarification, I don't have an objection. This is just a comment, really more of a question. I was wondering, for this park that seems pretty great, are there going, are there plans to, or do we need to, is the city planning on bulldozing any houseless encampments for this project?
Houses being damaged? Was that the question, Adam? No, I don't believe there's any homeless folks in this, in this park that are going to be impacted. Chelsea?
Hello, Chelsea Chizam Vargas, pronouns she/her/they. Thank you for allowing me to speak on the McCray Park. I've liked to, I've liked a lot of the improvements at that park. I think it's really cool with the lookout and everything. I will say I'm on a community Facebook page of Southsiders, and folks are really upset about, well, a lot of, a lot of folks were expressing just like dissatisfaction with the prioritization of the park versus the community. Folks are complaining about general things like businesses, like lack of businesses, and just the South Side being rundown. Councilman Gatto, I'm not sure if you're on that Facebook page, but if you're not, I would definitely invite you to join it. I did try to share your information on there with folks and let them know who their councilperson was, and there was a lot of discussion around that as well, but just wanted...
James Grimm.
Yes, hello.
Hello.
Okay, speaking on behalf of Jermaine Jackson. But anyways, you know, the park improvements are great, but I think what would improve it even more is if a completely entire different city council were voting on it. But, you know, that's something we can look forward to in the future. But I think what we need to do there is make, you know, take half the park and make it a sanctuary for the houseless community, a place where police can't come and harass them and steal their belongings and, and, you know, because I think the way it is now, it's kind of trashy.
Yeah, this doesn't have anything to do, this is about proposed plans, specifications, the contract. Those are non-Jermaine comments. Indira?
Hi, thank you. I was wondering about, we're talking about, like, the area of the park is within a ten-minute walk, and I know that, like, directly across from the lookout, like, across the river, so a ten-minute walk across the bridge, there are houseless camps. I'm just wondering if the view of those houseless camps is going to be something that you guys are addressing with the specifications for these plans? Since you guys usually, you know, eliminate those sorts of things when it is, you know, part of the development plans that you have. Just curious about the safety of those people.
That has been brought up to this point. KT?
Well, I'm one hundred percent concerned about that because, as you can tell, all of us that are calling in, we care deeply about the houseless community.
I understand. Do you have any questions about the plans or the specifications, the contract documents, or the engineer's estimate or the bids on this project?
I just asked it. Thank you.
Elizabeth?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
This is Elizabeth Volkers. I live over on the north side. My pronouns are she/her/they. And I specifically, regarding this proposal, think that if there are concerns with the houseless community, perhaps it should not be voted on tonight until concerns are addressed. Thank you.
All right, our time's up. We've got a motion on this. Let's pull the council, please.
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, this goes to forty-three. Item forty-three is the Meredith Trail Bank Repair near Southwest Seventh Street. Resolution Improving the Plans, Specifications, Form of Contract Documents, Engineer's Estimate, Receive and File Bids, and Designating the Lowest Responsible bidder as RW Escalating Solutions, LC. Dan E. Wilson is the managing member. Six hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars and ten cents. Council Communication Number twenty-one dash one eighty-five. A is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet, and B is approving the amendment with the Des Moines Wastewater Reclamation Authority, the WRA, for the Meredith Trail Bank Repair near Southwest Seventh Street Public Improvement Project. Council Communication Number twenty-one dash one eighty-two. Counsel, any comments on this?
I'm happy to move item...
Item forty-three, forty-three A and forty-three B.
All right, forty-three and forty-three A and forty-three B have been moved. Let's open it up and see if there's any objections from the public about the proposed plans or the specifications, the contract, or the estimated cost of the public improvement. Those are the Jermaine comments to this, to this issue. KT?
Um, yeah, I just would like to know, out of that money, how much of it is going to be used to help do some cleanup around then that area? And how many of you are personally going to go down in that area and take your time to do some cleanup before this project is going forward?
All right. Joshua Cook.
Hello, thank you, Josh Cook, South Side. I would like to echo the point KT made because name the date, and I'll meet you down there to help do some cleanup as well. And I just want to encourage the council to engage on the conversation that people are trying to have because throughout the last four points on the agenda, we're talking about spending close to four million dollars. And I don't think it's irrelevant to be talking about the nature of city spending when that's what all of these points are relevant to, when talking about how much help we could do to our houseless community with that same amount of money. Thank you.
Barina?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hi, my name's Barina, pronouns she/her. I would just like to point out that the council has been extremely selective about their time limits when certain people are speaking.
Okay, do you have anything to ask about the specifications, the plans, the contract, or anything to do with this project?
And your involvement, as well as the relevance.
Frida?
Hi, yeah, Frida Beckwith. I'm a resident of Ward Three in Des Moines. I am really supportive of this plan. I've looked over the council communication a little bit. I think that erosion along our riverbanks is a really big issue, and I'm glad that we're investing some money to address it. The one concern that I do have about this development plan is that the city of Des Moines keeps pushing houseless residents, you know, further and further into, like, out of sight, right? Like y'all, like Carl said, out of sight, out of mind. Like, y'all just don't want to see them. So when you push them to, you know, riverbanks and stuff, people, people living on the riverbanks and staying there, that actually can cause some damage, right? Like, especially along the levee, the levee, that kind of like weight of people, like, living, biking, driving there. So I'm wondering if this sort of development plan around making sure that the, you know, big problem of erosion, which y'all are obviously very concerned about and spending a lot of money on, if you've also considered the, like, houselessness crisis that...
All right, our time is up. We, item forty-three A and B has been moved. Would you pull the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, item forty-four is the 2021 Sidewalk Replacement Program. The motion here, or the recommendation, is to reject all bids and close the hearing on the plans, specifications, form of contract documents, and the engineer's estimate. Council Communication Number twenty-one dash one eighty. We just need a motion on this one.
Move forty-four, Your Honor.
All right, item forty-four has been moved. Would you pull the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, let's note that it's five fifty-one, and we're going to go back to our public speakers. The next public speaker would be Laura Ferraci. Laura, are you on? All right, let's go on to Reverend Katie Dawson. David DeBoer.
Yes, sir, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I know I only have a couple seconds. And I was going to talk about the Beaverdale Fairway Project, but I guess I'm going to have a chance at the next council meeting to do that. So unless something changes today, that's all I have to say today. Thank you.
Indira Schumaker.
Hi, my name is Indira Schumaker, she/her pronouns. The way you run these meetings is white supremacist and violent. You say we're disrupting city business, but the city's business is our business, and our business is eliminating racism and inequity in the city. What is yours?
Viola Perry.
Viola?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, Council, Viola Perry, Des Moines, ICCI Racial Justice Team. Officers O'Neil and Fong need to be removed as de-escalation trainers, but apparently has fallen on deaf ears. So you see, the way I see it, it seems like a shoulder check from the council, but trust, this is not over.
Zishan Biedani.
Hello, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Zishan Biedani, he/him pronouns. It seems kind of disappointing that issues are brought up repeatedly in the context of things are in Des Moines and are weighed off as non-Jermaine. I imagine the renovations to McCray Park and the kayaking stuff and all the money you're spending on the road is not going to exist alongside the homelessness, but yet the inability to want to tackle these problems is kind of embarrassing. Who will want to come to Des Moines when these problems are not solved?
Mariella Tuma.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Mariella Toma, and I live in Des Moines. As I'm sure no one amongst you would welcome yet more stories of the DMPP brutalizing minorities, wouldn't it make more sense to hire qualified civilians to train them in de-escalation? This would be one step forward for the DMPP. Like, that's you wouldn't depend on violent officers like Michael Fong and Sean O'Neil, who should fire anyway. Also, do fire Scott Sanders, who disgracefully opposes both of them.
I'm...
Yenna.
Yenna, are you on a phone? If you are, raise your hand. Is that you that raised your hand, actually? I don't know.
Okay, Alicia Chilton. Caitlin Hanson.
Hi. If you would like Des Moines to be the next site of a national embarrassment like Minneapolis is currently because of George Floyd, please do, keep doing what you're doing. At minimum, please have the DMPP at least have trauma-informed practices or CPI training. Abolish the police.
Amy Betel. John Noble.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
John Noble, he/him pronouns. Defund and abolish DMPP and replace the city council. For years, the people of this city have attended these meetings and demanded real solutions to end racist police violence. For years, this entire council has done nothing. The marijuana task force made the recommendations, you did nothing. When we called for violent officers to be removed, nothing. And now you restrict our speaking time and to continue to do nothing. By doing nothing, you have joined DMPP and inflicting racist violence on the people. Abolish DMPP.
Danny Austin.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, Danny Austin, Ward One, longtime listener, first-time caller. Remove Fong and O'Neal. If we cannot look into the current police force and find five officers to run a de-escalation training that have no incidence of use of excessive force or racist profiling, well, that just proves that we have bigger problems to address within the DMPP. And it also makes no sense that this decision is being made by a dismissive, unelected official, Mr. Sanders, and a chief of police winger who refuses to even meet with...
Cora Eggerman.
Hi, I just want to say that the people of Des Moines deserve a better city council than this. And I want to echo the Back the Black demands. So first, terminate all racists within the city and especially the police department, including those with violent records. So Michael Fong, Sean O'Neal, Dana Winger, Scott Sanders. Second, we need to legalize and decriminalize marijuana. And finally, we need to defund...
I'm...
Emma Coleman. Emma? Jeremiah Patton.
I'm calling on all of you to resign since you do not want to do your jobs, which is listen to the people of the city of Des Moines. You are all embarrassing to the city of Des Moines with your inaction on removing racist and violent police officers and by limiting free speech in these public meetings, abolish the police and fuck you.
Emily Gibson. Martha McCormick. Holly Holman. Randy Shoemaker.
Randy?
Excessive force in the case. The city manager's defense of the police chase appointment of Officer Fong as DMPP de-escalation trainer amounts to this. It wasn't Fong who used excessive force in the case that cost the city $800,000. He was only aiding and abetting. And as for punching handcuffed detainees, that cost us much less, and he learned from that. Yes, I'm sure he learned. The only impact on him is getting a promotion. His appointment is an escalation of violence in itself.
Tom Rendon. Elizabeth Folkers.
Hello?
Hello.
I'm here as a new speaker, as I've never spoke before, to show that there is wider community support for the demands of the Des Moines Black Liberation Movement. Remove Officer Fong and O'Neal. Policing can only be de-escalated when it ceases to exist. Abolish all races and classes, which also means abolish today's Des Moines City Council members, because cleanup is just a euphemism for harming and dehumanizing houseless people.
Giovanni Behena.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, Giovanni Behena, he/she they interchangeably. A friend from Illinois interviewed me for a paper for their master's thesis, and one of their questions was, "What is going on with the Des Moines City Council?" And when I explained what was going on with the Des Moines City Council, they looked at me in dismay and said, "Democracy decaying before our very eyes." So I really hope you are all proud of your legacy. Fuck you all, and you're welcome for my time.
Rachel Vipon.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Rachel Vipon, she/her pronouns. I want to affirm what my neighbors have already said, that it's reprehensible that removing an officer with a documented violent history from her leadership role in de-escalation training, truly, the least you could do is something that you refuse to even consider and you've doubled down on. You work for us, for your community, and yet we have virtually no time to speak, and you refuse to even consider one of our valid concerns.
Chelsea Chisholm-Vargas.
Hi, yes, y'all are sick. I hate it here. Remove Fong and O'Neal. They're both violent. Just remove them as officers in general. Fire Winger, fire Scott Sanders. Never forget, DMPP was violent towards young black children on May 31, 2020, and the council has done nothing about it. These people are abolishing the Des Moines Police Department. We just have to keep putting pressure on them, and then we'll get rid of the entire council as well.
I'm...
Brittany Cooley.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Brittany Cooley here. We want to, I stand with Iowa CCI, Iowa. We want a citizens review board. Police cannot police themselves. We want Chief Dana Winger to meet with the community. He refuses to respond to our many requests for a meeting. We want marijuana possessions a low priority for law enforcement. More than 50% of stops are less than five grams, which is comparable to a teabag. Black men are disproportionate.
I'm...
John Hardy.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, my name is John Hardy, he/him, and I'd like to use my time to talk about this de-escalation training issue and what a horrible job you're doing at exercising any meaningful oversight over the DMPP. Unfortunately, I can't very well do that because you're also doing a horrible job of managing these meetings.
Justin Lewis. See there? Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
All right, perfect. Hi, I'm Justin Lewis. I just wanted to specifically speak on government accountability, accessibility, and transparency. As you can see, there's seventy-five, seventy-five people that have showed up to this meeting with legitimate concerns and real concerns. I want to call out and say that we need to do right by the, the community's concerns, do right by people's hearts, and do right by citizens and residents of Des Moines. People are living in fear, and we have to do an answer to their concerns. Extend the talking time, and also, please...
Olivia Samples. Olivia?
Phone?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to just look what everyone else has said, that we need to remove these officers with histories of violence from the de-escalation training. Also, that this meeting is incredibly inaccessible, and if you care about supporting all people in our community, especially people with disabilities, we need to have captioning, continue Zoom meetings when we go back in person, and also give more than 25 seconds. Also, it's incredibly disrespectful that y'all don't listen to your constituents. Please have a town hall and...
I'm...
Ramona Bates.
Mayor, I just got a email from Ramona. She's sick, won't be able to attend tonight.
Okay, thank you. Mark Beckwith.
Hi, this is Mark Beckwith, Ward Three. I'd like you to really consider removing Fong and O'Neal from the de-escalation training. It undermines the credibility and efficacy of these efforts. This community is requiring this city council to really be leaders. You know, Iowa needs urban leaders. You guys are it, and you can't be intimidated by the Des Moines Police Department's threats. You need to take them under your control and our control. Thanks.
Jamie? Izaguar. Jamie?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
It's not Jamie, it's Hi-me. I don't know how many times I have to tell you. Yeah, it's really disrespectful that you made me sit through an hour of this to talk for 25 seconds. You need to remove Neil, O'Neal, you need to remove Fong, and you need to get off your asses and stop letting Scott Sanders govern for you. Do something like we elected you to do.
Devon Saberson. Yep, Suzanne Stewart.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Suzanne Stewart, Ward Three. It's my understanding that the proposed de-escalation training, as it currently exists, it consists of a two-hour refresher course for current DMPP officers. And when you combine this with the choice of trainers who have a history of using excessive force, it reflects a serious lack of respect for the needs of the community. The city needs to...
I'm...
Deborah Howell. Okay.
Debbie, you're on.
Hi, Trigger. Who in the hell do you people think you are trying to micromanage our chief? So proud of him, the city council, governor, legislature, for standing behind what's right. We are not defending the police, so get over it. If you want to be taken seriously, quit worrying about the cops and start worrying about the injustices of killing your own off. What happened to Sir Williams' killer? Oh, yeah, that's right, he was black. That's okay. Why didn't you go to...
I'm...
Jaclyn Thompson.
Mayor, I think you skipped one. Josh Cook, sorry.
He was disqualified. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, our city deserves DMPP officers who keep peace. De-escalation trainers with a history of excessive force and a city manager who refuses to seriously hear citizens' concerns do not serve this objective. Thank you.
Reverend Lee Shot.
Hi, this is Reverend Emily Ewing. I'm not actually Reverend Lee Shot, but I do think that you need to make Michael Fong step down from his role and fire Scott Sanders, as well as Chief Winger.
Okay, Janice Hawkins.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Janice Hawkins, CCI's racial justice team. Two of the five-person de-escalation training team have shown, while on active duty, how to not de-escalate a situation. This would not be accepted in the private sector. Why here? The community is telling you that Chief Winger and Scott Sanders are demonstrating impaired judgment on this matter.
I'm...
Caitlin Gole. Caitlin? Brianna Moss. Carter White.
My name is Carter White. My pronouns are he/him/his. In the past year, you have made Juneteenth a holiday for black liberation, a paid holiday for your majority white officers, and you have created and ignored the Marijuana Task Force. You have also failed to condemn your violent officers. This is not a personal attack, but a critical analysis. You should fire Sanders, Fong, O'Neal, and Winger. You should follow the Cannabis Task Force.
I'm...
Denny Chronic or Cronik.
Oh, Your Honor.
Brenda McDonald.
Brenda, if you're on a phone, hit star nine to raise your hand.
Hey, this is Brenda. I support police abolition.
Yeah. Denver Foot. Denver, it looks like you were on, we skipped you earlier.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Denver Foot. I use she/her pronouns. Twenty-five seconds is what you gave us, but twenty-five seconds is not enough to share the pain from officers that brutalize and terrorize our communities and our city. Fong and O'Neal must be removed from de-escalation training? Better yet, they should be fired. Council, do your job. Scott Sanders works for you, not the other way. Council, stop letting terrorists run this town, because that's what they are, terrorists. DMPP, Dana Winger, Fong, O'Neal, Scott Sanders, terrorists.
I'm...
Mayor, I think, I didn't know who that was that spoke, but we got an email...
Can you hear me?
We got an email saying we...
I have Brenda.
Triple E. Leah.
We've got, all right, we've got Brenda.
Yeah. I'd like to applaud the leadership for passing Back the Blue Bill, Senate File 342, by a sixty-three to thirty margin, and also Senate File 534, which will also affect protesters by a thirty-one to seventeen margin. The message has been sent and should be heard that the state of Iowa will not engage in the current disruption to individual lives. And please pray for the seven-year-old that was murdered.
Okay, Leah? Leah, are you on?
Hi, Leah, she/her. I was going to come on here and talk about backing the black, but I'm sure you guys have heard those points already. So I would like to echo what Peyton Shoemaker said earlier, and we all read your, your response to the ADA request that you denied, and that was, that was truly one of the most horrific things I've ever seen in my life. And just on top of that, Carl Hoss talking about unhoused community today and saying that they're trashy, you all should be...
I'm...
Your Honor, if there's someone else to speak, I'll move items A through Z, double A through double Z, triple A through triple S.
All right, we're going to receive all of our speakers, and thank you for the motion. All right, we're going to receive all of our speakers, and thank you for the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, they have been received and filed. Thank you all for attending, and thank you, Council, for your service, and to all of our city departments. Appreciate your work. With that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for attending.